September 2nd, 2025, meeting of the Surrey County Board of Commissioners. Uh, we hope you all had a wonderful Labor Day weekend. Got out and enjoyed some of this beautiful weather. So we're gonna get right into it tonight. And first on the agenda is invocation and pledge of allegiance. Vice Chairman Bill Goins, with everyone standing.
Let's pray. Father have we thankful for this beautiful day. Father, we're thankful for the beautiful weather you send our way. Father, we're thankful for your grace and for your mercy. Father, we pray that you be with us through this meeting. That you'd help us to make decisions that are best for the citizens of this county. Father, we pray for all those who stand to protect and defend us wherever they may be. And we just pray that you place your God, your loving hand upon them. On all things, we give you the praise in our voice, which in Christ name we pray.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, in the path of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever to be.
Thank you, Commissioner Goins. Next is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Commissioner Goins. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the approval of August 18th, 2025 meeting minutes. I have a motion.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes, sir.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the consent agenda. We have nine bullet points tonight. And I'll talk, turn it over to County Manager Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is an update from Beston Surrey. The allocation agreed on from the discretionary funds at the last meeting for, excuse me, no. This was to correct some information and some, uh, just, uh, I guess accountability for Surrey Friends of Youth. That has all been cleared up. And so the recommendation isn't here to release those funds. Uh, position creation for paralegal is next item. Next is appointment of a deputy purchasing officer within the finance office. Next is position title change in the Surrey County Office of Substance Abuse Recovery. Next is an MOU with Surrey County Schools and DSS Foster Care. Next is a position reclassification. Next item is budget amendment number three, which is for family caregivers and health and also cleanup for Invest in Surrey. Next item is petty cash for Register of Deeds and Health and Nutrition Center. And finally, cancellation of the neighborly software contract as we will not be needing that in future budget years for nonprofits. And that's consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next is the open forum. We have every open meeting. You will have three minutes to come up and say just about what you want to, uh, as long as it's not too bad. So, uh, when you come up, state your name and telephone number. And I'll open it up now. Any takers? All right, I will now close the open forum. Next is Jamie Edwards, Substance Abuse Recovery Director, Surrey Transition Project and Surrey County Office of Substance Abuse Recovery Program Advisory Council Membership. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, thank you. Excited to be here with you today and thank you for the agenda inclusion and to Mr. County Manager for allowing me to speak today. We have two items, um, primarily. You should also have two booklets, I hope, in your agenda packets. A clear cover booklet, that's tonight's conversational topic. And the blue one for further reading if you happen to not be able to sleep a particular night. Um, this is basically informational only. But tonight's topic is the, the transition project. We call STP. Um, sure, those are activities that's conducted within the detention center. So. Well, okay, we can do that. Okay. We, um, thankfully, I have a copy of my slide deck. There were some numbers we wanted to share with you, um, initially. And, um, these activities were from, um, the origination of the project from early February, 2025, until, um, last week. Um, so we'll be talking about two timeframes. The first being, um, for the next two minutes, activity since the very beginning inside the detention center itself. Then we'll get into a, a briefer time period. Two hundred and thirty-two individuals we've served. And that's a duplicated count, meaning some of those individuals we've served multiple times. Therefore, they're showing up on my count multiple times. But two hundred and fifty-two, that's a pretty large number for a six-month period of time. We've provided eight hundred and sixty-one duplicated hours of service. That means if you count up and calculate every single hours provided inside the detention center to detainees, times the amount of time stamp is provided services, that's eight hundred and sixty-one hours. In six months, we're really proud of that number. We've provided twenty-three weeks of uninterrupted service since the very beginning. Um, so twenty-three weeks divided by, um, all those hours. You're basically looking at, um, seventy-six, um, groups or seventy-six classes that we've offered since February at one time.
Jamie, while you're waiting for that question.
Yep.
You said that some of those were duplicate numbers. Is that because you receive multiple services or is that because they left the jail or re-entered the jail?
Um, duplicate services, meaning, uh, one individual could participate in treatment services and then JED services, job training services, certification services. Yes. That's actually a point of intention with the program. We want to serve individuals within multiple service provisions or types of service. We simply don't want to provide just one type of service to the individual. The greater touches we can have with the individual, the different types actually increases success. Yes.
Lee, we got you going.
Thank you. That's, thank you. Yes. So these are the numbers I spoke of earlier. Earlier, two hundred and thirty-two duplicated services, eight hundred and sixty-one hours, uh, twenty-three weeks of service and seventy-six groups and classes here. Um, if we can move to the next. Again, the transition project, we're labeling activities within the detention center itself as the Surrey Transition Project. And a unique item or characteristic about this project is we can provide services for six months post-release as well. So not only do we continue or begin services inside the detention center, under the federal guidelines, we can provide the same level of service for six months post-release. That's really, really important because if we don't provide a level of service post-release, um, the likelihood of a positive outcome dramatically decreases. Um, goals, as you see in, in front of you. Primary goal is this public safety and to reduce recidivism. Reduce the, the odds, the percentage that someone is already arrested. That is first and foremost, the first goal. Second goal is to promote recovery, not only in terms of their substance use or behavioral health issues, but also related to, um, citizenship. And in ensuring that individuals who are released from the local detention center are most appropriately, um, that they have the skills to be positive leaders in this community. And self-sufficiency is a primary goal as well. We want individuals that can pay taxes, that take care of their kids, that reduce their substance use, are no longer involved in the court system and all those details that's required to make sure those things happen. Uh, bottom of the slide there, you will see that this project is funded by federal funding at this point through September of 2026 with a possible one-year extension into September of 2027. So what is all this about? We provide substance use screenings and assessments in custody. Um, so if you were to go to a local clinic and receive a substance use assessment, that's what we do inside the facility. We provide case management to individuals, um, pre-release and post-release. How do we make sure the individual is set up appropriately to receive the care they need post-release? If we start those conversations two days before, it's too late. Usually we have to start those conversations weeks or months in advance, especially when individuals, and the majority of our individuals do, do not have anywhere to go. They are truly homeless. Um, many times family members are unwilling to accept them and they have no home to go to. Workforce development and education is a big component of what we do. Um, job readiness training. Uh, we've traditionally provided, um, NC Department of Transportation Flagler Certification. That's something we're really proud of. This week, we're beginning SERF Safe Certification Training. If you walk into a restaurant and see the SERF Safe, um, Safety Certification for Employers. Um, we have that capacity. GED programming started two weeks ago. We're really proud of that. For a detention center this size, that's a, that's a pretty big accomplishment, um, due to the efforts of the Community College. And we wrap these activities around other COSAR services, such as transportation and housing assistance and, um, connection to the EMS Post-Overdose Response Team and the Health and Nutrition Center. This project is a pretty good example of collaborative efforts across county departments. Without those other departments, this would not be happening. And we can certainly think not only the Sheriff's Office, the Detention Center, the Health Department and EMS. They're truly a central piece of this entire system we're trying to build. And of course, re-entry planning. Without appropriate re-entry planning in advance, if we don't have a plan post, pre, if we don't have a plan pre-release, we don't have a plan post-release and everything truly falls apart. Uh, just some generic demographics. Now, these demographics are only through June 30th. Um, we look at demographics quarterly. So between February and, um, June 30th, only about, only related to substance use services, where you touched thirty-nine individuals. Twenty-seven of those were male, twelve were female. And almost half of those were of the age thirty to thirty-nine. That's pretty important because if we look at overdose rates historically in this county, thirty to thirty-nine is really the, the age grouping that's disproportionately impacted. Um, you can see the impacts across the respective genders. That's, um, males thirty to thirty-nine are a significant risk inside of Surrey. Uh, this may be a surprise, but it's, it's growing in terms of confirmation. Uh, the opiate issue is still a clear and present danger to this county, to the state, to the nation. But we're seeing, we're seeing some really subtle differences, especially with stimulants. Uh, this is in terms of my diagnostic impression when I meet someone inside the detention center. Um, stimulants tends to be their primary drug of chores. Uh, methamphetamine, cocaine, crack, cocaine is actually on the street again. Um, four years ago, opiates were again, um, a primary drug of chores, not so much so these days. Um, alcohol, we, we can't, alcohol really never went away. Alcohol has, has been here, will continue to be here. But what's happening based on report of, of our detainees is a combination frequently of stimulants and alcohol. Um, generally, the conversation is not stimulants and opiates. It is stimulants and alcohol. Um, so on this chart, someone may, uh, be using a stimulant, for example, and alcohol both at the same time. Uh, we also conduct, um, this is some criminal justice piece of this. Um, we evaluate and project potential recidivism, uh, based on science-based instruments. Those individuals we've touched, those individuals inside the detention center, they have high risk and they have high needs. They're generally, so frequently, individuals that might be in the prison system ten years ago, except for housing them today locally. If you look at the male average score, eighty percent. What that means is statistically, based on the instrument I've used for almost thirty years, eighty percent of the individuals we've talked with, more than likely will reoffend if we don't do anything. The more shocking is the female rate, ninety-two percent. They're showing much higher risk and needs than the males. Um, of course, our sample size for the females is smaller, but the needs are, are just extremely obvious. Uh, the individuals, those ladies who, uh, is inside the detention center, their need level and their risk for reoffense is, is much higher than the males. And that's something that sometimes gets lost in the mix. We frequently think about the males in our detention center, but those females equally, uh, need services as well. Um, this is a, a quick breakdown. We screened twenty-seven people on the male side, twelve on the female side. Just because we screen, screen someone doesn't necessarily mean that we accept them into the program. We could, we could screen them for another reason. Maybe re-screen them for accountability in recovery court. Maybe we screen them for a local, uh, treatment facility or for, at a county treatment facility. But we, you can see the engagement rates there. Those are the rates of individuals we screen versus actual participation in the counseling programs. Um, as of June 30th, we had seven graduates from the male, zero from the females. But we started the female groups later than the males. So at that part, no one was eligible to graduate. Uh, we asked for feedback, um, from clients in terms of substance use services. You see that on the, the, um, chart. In terms of, we asked them what they received from the experience for that particular day. Uh, we've collected a hundred and thirty-eight responses from individuals. And you can see truly the things we talk about. If you're interested in what did we talk about, focus in on in substance use services, recovery and growth, uh, how to access services, how to talk about you're not by yourself, and what's some of those practical strategies to reduce risk? And, um, what does it look like to be sober and out of the court system? Many of our individuals, that's a hard thing to imagine. Uh, we serve individuals who've been in the prison system for twelve, thirteen, fourteen years. And they're, they're in our detention center for another new charge or pending court. Um, as we finish up here, how this looks on the therapeutic side. We have an assessment and intake process. We develop goals. Uh, our intervention is usually lasts twelve weeks, twelve to thirteen weeks on the clinical side. Then we provide re-entry support for up to six months after the fact. That six months is extremely, extremely important. Um, another equal part of this that, that can't be discredited is our Justice and Business Services portion. We served a hundred and fourteen people across three job training services. This financial skills, job readiness and the DOT Flagler Certification I mentioned in the very beginning. Um, those are males and females both. And you can actually see how those numbers break out. Um, Emily does a really good job with DOT Flagler Certification. As of June 30th, of the forty-four individuals that were in class, forty-two were certified. Uh, that's, that's a pretty good number. And that is a in-demand credential that employers in this county asked for. Uh, and we've been really, really successful with, with employment placements. Financial skills, um, was a new activity in, in, in June and the job readiness training. Um, basically how to interview, fill a job application out. What do you do if you've ever been asked, have you been charged with a criminal offense? Uh, what if you can't remember when you graduated high school? Answering questions that we perceive as simple, but really isn't that simple to individuals who have really never been in the workforce before. Um, again, JED programming started August 30th, I'm sorry, August 20th. Um, SERF Safe, um, is beginning this week in September. And, um, we're identifying, um, processes and procedures based on evidence base where we integrate substance use services and criminal justice and employment services all at the same time. Because if we only talk about substance use services, our impact will be minimal. If we only talk about employment services, impact's minimal. If we only talk about, um, criminal justice services, impact is minimal. So the secret sauce here, and, and the leap of faith I'm making, uh, for the offices, where our goal is to find a way to integrate all those perspectives at the same time. Because research tells us if we can do that, we can make an impact on those recidivism rates. But it would be a long, hard, slow run-up. But the danger is of programs like this, is we only implement programs by themselves. One thing at all, one thing at, at a time. Substance use over here, education over here, um, criminal justice activities over here. And if we just address it differently, separately, our impact will be much less than an integrated approach. Um, certainly want to thank, um, my office. Um, Steve and Teresa's with me today. Uh, the Sheriff's Office, this would not be happening without the Sheriff's Office. Um, and most certainly the, the detention center staff. Um, I could not have asked for a better group of colleagues to work with than that center staff. They're simply amazing. Uh, and the Community College, who has, has really been part of this process since the very beginning. We just haven't talked about it as much as we should have. So most certainly thank you to, to all those groups. And thank you to the board for supporting this really, um, unique effort. And to Chairman Marion for, for visiting with us two weeks ago, I think it was, for the JED launch. Um, and a small testimonial. We're not read this, but please, please take a chance. Um, we'll make these slides available after the fact. But this is a testimonial from a female participant who, um, has, has been incarcerated for a long period of time. And this is not her first, um, incarceration either, um, across the street. And, um, this is what we want to do. And, and she said it better than anyone. So certainly willing to, to take any questions you may have.
Chairman, I got a couple.
Yes, sir.
Uh, on this particular program, Jamie, uh, how many new employees did it involve before implementation?
Well, good question. Um, the federal grants, um, funds two positions. One of those positions is still, um, open and filled. We filled, um, the alternative full-time position, um, a month and a half ago. Um, we're leveraging opiate settlement funding, uh, to provide employment services and educational coordination. And then, then me, uh, with existing settlement funding as well. Uh, so you have a total of four individuals primarily involved, her accounting employees.
And I was gonna follow up, Mr. Chairman, if I may. And it, this program is funded through September of twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six.
And if, what do you think would happen to the program if the funding were certainly to just suddenly cease? I see so many of these things that they, they are, they are of good intent. And they come from the federal and state levels and all kinds of places. And a lot of times over the years, I've just noticed it just happens. And maybe accidentally, but maybe not so much so. But they, there are available grants for these upstart programs, not like this, but similar programs, similar, different departments. Um, what are employees being told how they might, their employment might be affected if there were a lack of funding? And, uh, are they, are they understanding that this program is temporarily funded? Uh, would, would you envision that depending on the merits of the program, when we get to that point, if the program were to, the, the funds were to certain, to suddenly cease, would you, would it be an expectation that that's something the county would have to step up and fund? Or, I mean, what's your, I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot really, but what's, what's your, what's your thoughts about that and concerning the uncertainty of the ongoing, ongoing funding mechanism?
New employees, brand new employees, are provided informed consent. This is a grant program. Um, to backstop that, Denise and I have a budget model that, that we feel pretty confident. Unless we absorb other surprises, um, via federal funding or opiate settlement funding, then a, a, there's a significant opportunity to continue these services with opiate settlement funding.
So we hope that's the case, but right now that's un, that's really unknown.
Right. Now, if we choose to prioritize this program with opiate settlement funding, it, it truly narrows our potential in the future to expand. Um, we'll have to prioritize beginning in 2029 to 2030. We'll have to start being really methodical in terms of how we prioritize funding, which strategies we want to find and ensure that that's the real of the board. Um, we have a little bit of flexibility until 2028, 2029. Beginning in 2029, 2030, we have to be extremely methodical. And part of that method is hopefully, um, by 2027, the board will have some, and, and the Sheriff's Office will have some hard data and, and research that will help us make, um, better recommendations for, for the board to consider about this particular topic, STP. Yeah.
I'd just like to say thank you and, uh, to the Sheriff's Office and COSAR County, uh, Community College for all the collaborative efforts to produce all these programs. And, you know, we, we started the GED program and, uh, that was, uh, pretty special. You know, education's very critical for these folks when they do get out. Get a job. Most of the time, you have to have some sort of education to, uh, to be able to get a job. So, uh, it just takes a good collaborative effort with all the services and programs you provide. So we appreciate everything you're doing and Sheriff's Office with the Detention Center. Uh, great staff, that, and all. And sheriff's office with the detention center, great staff, all of them there. So just keep up the good work, and we thank you for what you're doing.
Did I answer?
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Jamie. And good luck, we hope, for a good outcome.
Thank you, thank you. Final item inside of your packet is the reestablishment of the SCOSAR Advisory Committee. This committee's been somewhat dormant for the past couple of years. Or I think back, I think the last meeting I attended, it was 2022, when my predecessor was in the office. We would like to reimagine and reactivate that advisory group. That will become extremely important based on opiate settlement funding. My goal is to conduct a community needs assessment to present new recommendations to this board every four years. It's time. And we can't effectively process that information and make those recommendations to this board without that advisory committee. And you will see a listing of some names that you may be familiar with, maybe a few individuals you're not. But they have all agreed to serve if it's the riches of the board.
We need to take action. Well, I'd like to make a motion to reestablish the Substance Abuse Recovery Program Advisory Council. Do we have a second?
Second, that.
Second, by Commissioner Hyatt, any discussion?
Are all these, I assume, volunteer positions purely? Okay.
I know most of the folks on this list. I don't ever like to have a meeting or a committee just to have one. But this is a great group of professionals that are experts in their field that I think you've done a good job of convening us.
Thank you.
Of good intention, always.
Thank you. My attempt was to take the sector representation from the original panel that this board approved, but also match it to the state expectations at the same time. The opiate settlement group has a recommended list of sector representation. So I think we can meet both needs at the same time.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Next on the agenda is Chris Knopf, County Manager. Fire and Rescue Service District Resolution, Propose Fire and Rescue Commission and Boards of Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll handle the first two together, behalf of the Fire Service Committee. Under North Carolina law, the county commissioners are responsible for how fire protection is provided in the unincorporated areas. Solely, the county commissioners are responsible. Counties have various methods to deploy, and Suri County Fire Protection has been contracted out to tax-exempt nonprofit corporations, also known as volunteer fire departments. In 2024, this board commissioned, or excuse me, started the process of evaluating the fire service. And basically, the current structure of the fire service has been similar for the last half century. This was brought on by years of concerns raised, some from the volunteer fire departments and some from the general public. Concerns included funding disparities, declining volunteerism, the need for paid firemen, assistance with the purchase of apparatus and equipment, and in a few cases, greater transparency about certain volunteer fire departments. Volunteer fire departments provide a valuable service, so finding a different model going forward was important to the board. That's when the board commissioned a comprehensive study conducted by qualified, independent, third-party to evaluate all aspects of the fire service. The results of the study were presented to the Board of Commissioners on February the 26th of this year. In addition to the study, the county solicited feedback from community members and sought out best practices from other counties who've been down this road in North Carolina and who have undertaken changes to their fire protection models. Since the presentation was made in February, the county's been working to develop a plan to ensure that every resident has the best fire protection service possible. The board acknowledged the following during this process. Consistent with North Carolina law, the board is responsible for deciding how best to provide and fund rural fire protection. Also, the current model has created an imbalance in fire service funding based on the tax base of each fire protection service districts. Basically, some agencies have great financial resources while most do not. The current state of volunteerism and response are such that it requires the dispatch of multiple departments to ensure personnel respond to calls for service. Departments use their district tax funds to cover calls regardless of where they respond. The board acknowledged that every taxpayer deserves for their respective fire service agency to be funded at an acceptable level, which is unachievable with the current model. Some fire service programs are funded from Suri County's general fund and not the individual fire protection districts. The board determined that all fire service programs should be funded from a single source, and that goes back to the retreat in February. And finally, the board determined that its statutory responsibility is such that a body is needed to work directly with the fire and rescue service agencies to make recommendations, to provide oversight, and to enhance communication. This strategy is in concert with how county government handles other responsibilities, such as the Board of Adjustment or the Board of Equalization Review, the Board of Health, so on and so forth. Tonight, the board has two items to consider. One is to begin the process of retiring taxation in the 17 rural fire protection districts and create a single countywide fire protection service district with a 15-cent tax cap, like we have now in the individual districts, where each taxpayer has the same rate, and revenues are distributed based on equitable basis grounded on the response district size, the response district's population, the response district's I S O, and land use intensity. The resolution before you, as is stated, will initiate this process by establishing the 15-cent taxation cap that we currently have in place. And it also schedules a public hearing for November the 3rd, 2025, to solicit public comment. Secondly, the board has before it an item to create a Suri County Fire and Rescue Commission to work with the volunteer departments to provide the oversight and develop recommendations to the board regarding the volunteer fire service. The commission will be made up of active fire service members and citizens of the proposed service district. The utilization of fire commissions across this state is not uncommon and has actually grown quite a bit in recent years. Now, why are these items coming before the board tonight? Quite simply, the county will begin its budget process in January for fiscal year '27. Therefore, if these changes do occur, the board must begin the process now so it does not impede the upcoming budget development calendar. To tie it back to the study that was completed, the very first goal, goal number one, on page 435, had two objectives, or actually had three objectives. One, the first one was to evaluate all contractual agreements with the fire departments, which is county attorney has taken the lead on. There will be new contracts coming out as of the first of the year. The existing contracts, they will receive notice, will expire on June 30th of next year. Also, these new contracts should develop performance requirements. This was to include review all the contracts and the tax rates. It was also to determine the feasibility in creation of a fire commission or fire service advisory committee, whichever the board chose to put in place. And also, the second objective was to develop and implement service district agreements in place of fire tax districts. That's what's before we tonight, the very first goal in the study that you commissioned in 2024. So at this time, I'm going to read the resolution that you have before you. And this is the resolution defining and establishing the maximum property tax rate for the proposed countywide service district to provide fire protection services. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 153A-301 authorizes the Suri County Board of Commissioners to establish and define a service district in order to finance, provide, or maintain for the district certain services in addition to, or to a greater extent than those financed, provided, or maintained for the entire county. And whereas Suri County has established countywide firefighting resources to support volunteer fire departments serving in unincorporated areas of Suri County, the countywide area, as it may be known, by expanding revenue raised from 17 rural fire protection districts and by expanding general county revenue funds to aid different stations across the county to aid in first response. Whereas it would be advantageous to establish a countywide service district to fund such countywide firefighting resources. And whereas the Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing on November the 3rd, 2025, regarding the establishment and defining a fire service district to include those territories within the countywide area that will be included within the service district. And whereas pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 153A-309.2, the county will publish notice of such public hearing. Notice of the hearing shall state the date, hour, and place of the hearing and its subject, and shall include a map of the proposed service district and a statement that the report required by General Statute 153A-302B is available for public inspection in the office of the clerk to the board. The notice shall be published at least twice, with one publication not less than two weeks before the hearing and the other publication on some other day, not less than two weeks before the hearing. And whereas the town of Dobson and the town of Pilot Mountain have been advised that they may choose to opt-in to the proposed countywide fire service district if they come to terms with the county and if said municipalities pass a resolution to opt-in. Whereas if the proposed countywide fire service district is established, the county will cease levying taxes under the current rural fire protection districts and instead rely on the countywide fire service district for funding. Whereas the maximum tax rate for the 17 rural fire protection districts is limited to 15 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation. And whereas the property tax rate necessary to fund such countywide resources will be far less than a rate of 15 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation. And whereas, other than the general limitation on property taxes in North Carolina General Statute 153A-149, there is no limitation on the amount of taxes which may be levied under normal fire service district. That's why the resolution has to come before we tonight and not in November. Whereas North Carolina General Statute 153A-309.2 provides an alternate procedure for establishing a fire protection service district, which is capped at 15 cents on each $100 of subject to taxation. And whereas in furtherance of fiscal responsibility in order to limit the tax burden on Suri County taxpayers, the Suri County Board of Commissioners has chosen to proceed under North Carolina General Statute 153A-309.2 in order to cap taxation at 15 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation. And whereas this resolution is intended to comply with the alternative procedure set forth in North Carolina General Statute 153A-309.2 in order to cap taxation at 15 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Suri County Board of Commissioners that property taxes for the proposed fire service district to serve the countywide area may not be levied in excess of a rate of 15 cents on each $100 of property subject to taxation. Be it further resolved by the Suri County Board of Commissioners that the clerk to the board is hereby directed to make such publications or the notice of public hearing regarding the proposed new service district as set forth in North Carolina General Statute 153A-309.2B. And that's the resolution before you. I also go back to a document that was provided on behalf of the chief's council by their officers, and I believe it was March or April, it wasn't long after the retreat, in which they had been through the study. And they had basically recommended a number of, take some of the recommendations from the study and had a recommendation for how to implement them. While what you have before you tonight does address some of those issues, like number one, develop a sustainable funding model. That's what the effort is here countywide. Another was to incentivize I S O improvements. As I mentioned earlier in my comments, any funding model in the future will provide funding enhancement for those that have lower I S O ratings. They also recommended updating the fire contracts as well. So there are some similarities here. There's a lot of recommendations in the study. The Fire Service Committee has a lot more work to do in the coming months. But these two are the primary ones in order to get ready for the budget process next year. As I said, the new contracts that the attorneys have been working on will be distributed to the Board of Directors of each fire department, selected fire department, after the first of the year. Will have to be in place by June 30th to go into effect July 1. But these two items are all that you have before you tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. After listening to the resolution, do we have any comments? Or be brought forth before we do the motion?
Before we started, we failed to mention that Commissioner Harris is not with us this evening. Mr. Harris is a new grandfather this evening, and he's with his daughter and new grandson. Back in March, after we finished the retreat, a fire commission was created of six members, myself, Commissioner Harris, and some county staff. There has been a lot of work that has gone into this that has followed the line of the North Carolina General Statutes and the strategic plan. There has been some confusion and some misinformation that is shared as a distraction that has what has happened. But there is nothing that has gone into any of this that has not been by that strategic plan presented from the consultants or by the North Carolina General Statutes. So if folks thought they were coming for something, they weren't, we regret that. But I stand behind this. I believe that there are folks that believe this will raise taxes. There are some districts that might be affected slightly. But when those contracts go into place and I S O ratings change, that will be offset in insurance claims. So I believe this is a positive step forward in making sure that the citizens get the best return on investment of their fire tax dollars.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, do we have a motion to pass the resolution? Adopt the resolution defining and establish the maximum property tax rate for the proposed countywide service district to provide fire protection services?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Tucker, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right, next is the development of fire commission. Am I correct?
Yes. You have in your packet a...
Hey, do I have a motion to establish a fire, Suri County? Okay.
I was just going to say, I didn't state this earlier, sorry. But included in the packet is rules of procedure for a theoretical fire and rescue commission, as well as a hypothetical roster. These do not have names, but it's just the different fire service members, civilian members, and the ex-ficio members. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. All right, do I have a motion to establish a Suri County Fire and Rescue Commission and adopt the rules of procedure as presented for the governance of said commission?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Goins, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
All right, my final item, Mr. Chairman. There are a number of boards and committees that need appointments or reappointments. Animal Control Committee, no specified terms, they meet as needed. The Board of Equalization Review, there's still one vacancy there. Dobson Township, three-year term. And then on the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, these are all two-year terms. Nicholas Hooker would need to be appointed, referred by Chief Dale Watson, City of Mallerie PD, to replace the seat previously held by Alyssa Martin. And then Colleen Getzky. All right, thank you. A new appointment, Guardian Adlitem, replacing Elaine. I'll... Abenich.
Abenich.
And then finally, Abby Bishop, Kevin Kilby, Mark Marion, Tanya Oakley, Jeff Sedlasek, and Andrew Wright, who've all agreed to be reappointed. And those last three bullet points are all under Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Mr. Chairman.
All right, can we do them all at one time?
Can I ask a question first? How many vacancies are on the Animal Control Board? Three? Okay, thank you.
Does it matter what district?
No.
That means currently serving.
There's five, I think. One of these is me that we had to remove me, and then two others roll off. So I think it's five.
Right now, they only have two members.
Hopefully, anyone listening to this will be willing to sign up for it. I believe we have several applications, right, Andrew? All right, maybe we can reach out to those folks and see if they'd be willing to serve on any of these committees. Do I have a motion to appoint or reappoint the folks on the Animal Control Committee, Board of Equalization Review, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council?
I'll make a motion to appoint and reappoint those for the Juvenile Crime Commission Council tonight and wait for nomination.
tonight and wait for nominations for the other two boards.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman. We have a request closed session for legal and personnel. Yes.
All right. Next is general county business. I'll start with Commissioner Tucker.
I, I have nothing tonight, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Goins?
Well, hey, thanks. Appreciate everybody coming out tonight.
Mr. Hyatt?
Volunteerism is extremely important. You heard four opportunities tonight to get involved in county government. Please reach out to the county clerk if you have an interest.
All right. I'd just like to congratulate Commissioner Harris and his whole family and, uh, him becoming a grandpa today, uh, baby boy. And, uh, all indications, mother and baby are doing, doing well. I don't know about Eddie, but he, we'll see. Nervous grandpa. But, uh, thank you all for coming out tonight. Lot of, lot of information shared tonight and, uh, please take it home and digest it and, uh, remember the public hearing on November the third. So we'll see you again in two weeks. Again, thank you all for coming out and being concerned about county business.
Motion going closer.
Motion by Commissioner Hyatt. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. He's, he's had all the talking.
How you doing?
All right, back in session. Motion.
A motion to approve salary for elections director at grade seventy five step eight effective September first, two thousand and twenty five.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Goins, seconded by Commissioner Hyatt. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion carried three to one. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tucker.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Goins. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.